Good evening and welcome. Good evening and welcome to the Bloomington Planning Commission meeting for August 25, 2021. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteer Bloomington residents appointed by the city council. The commission is advisory to the council. For most items, we make recommendations, and the council has final decision-making authority. In certain cases, the Planning Commission can approve or deny an application subject to an appeal to the city council. We do not have any of those items tonight. For each item, there will be a staff report, an opportunity for the applicant to present, and time for any member of the public to provide testimony. Our first order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we begin, we do still have a remote testimony component, so I'll ask Mr. Mark Agard to go over that.
Yes, Mr. Chair Commissioners, we do have one public hearing tonight. And while the chambers is open, and you can come here to testify, you can also testify remotely. So to do that, just call in on your phone at the number on the screen, 1-415-655-0001. And once you are there, you would enter in the access code, 177-186-6719. And we will have these numbers scrolling across the screen during the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mark Agard. The first item on the agenda tonight is a series of city code amendments related to environmental review and fees. Ms. Farnham has the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Let's see, I need to share. All right, so I am going to go over an item that was on our 2021 work plan, which is to incorporate or codify the statutory requirements around environmental review into our city code. So that's the first order of business on the purpose statement here. In doing that, really the reason why we're doing that, because we're subject to these requirements, whether they're in our code or not. But it will really help us with coordinating as we go through our own development review process. It's kind of more upfront and center. Staff will be more aware of it, and it'll be easier to make developers aware of it. So the idea is to foster consistency and efficiency and transparency. So just a little bit about environmental review. It's a technical process, and the purpose is to identify and evaluate potential environmental impacts of a project. It's only subject to projects that are large enough to exceed the thresholds that the state lays out, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. During that whole process, you consider alternatives and explore methods to reduce or mitigate any negative impacts that might be identified. It is not intended to, as a means, to approve or deny a project. However, the information provided in the review can be used to inform the approvals or approval process. There's essentially two different types of environmental review. There's mandatory and discretionary. So here's an overview of the mandatory types. So there's an environmental assessment worksheet, an EAW. That is the more basic form, and the thresholds are a little bit lower. You can see here, so these are the thresholds for a city like Bloomington, which is classified in statutes as a second-class city. And so you can see the thresholds here for residential, 250 unattached or 375 attached units. For residential, where it's the, the project is inconsistent with the guiding in the comp plan, the threshold is a little bit lower. And then with regard to industrial, commercial, institutional, it's 300,000 gross square feet. And warehouse or light industrial, it's 450,000 gross square feet. An environmental impact statement is a more in-depth and thorough kind of a review, and thus it applies to projects that are bigger. So the thresholds there are larger. Then we have what's called discretionary environmental review. So these are for projects that don't meet the mandatory thresholds for environmental review, and the city can order a discretionary EAW if it determines that the project poses some significant environmental potential impacts due to the nature of the project or its location. And then we have what's called an alternative urban area-wide review, an Auar. Some of you may be aware, we have an Auar in the South Loop district. The first one was done back in 2002. And that is essentially an EAW that covers a broad area. And they are used in places like the South Loop, where we know that the level of development is going to be fairly substantial. And so individual projects could very easily exceed the threshold for individual EAWs. By doing an Auar, you look at those impacts of the forecast development. And then, as long as a project comes in that is within that, what you had forecast, and it doesn't exceed what you had forecast, the Auar review is essentially like having done an EAW, but you don't have to do a separate one for each individual project. And to remain valid, they have to be updated every five years. So we're going to be coming back to you with the update to the South Loop Auar in early 2022. 2000, sorry, 2022, never mind. Okay, so I'm gonna, went a little too fast there, I think. Nope. I'm going to walk you through, there's several sections, chapters of the code where there are some proposed changes that are all related to this. And the first is in Chapter 15, which really is about building permitting chapter. And so this is where we have housed for many years, since 1982, some language around what's called generic studies. And these are sort of larger studies that would look at, you know, things like traffic or utilities and those kinds of things. And since its inception, it was, has only been applied in the South Loop, and that was really why it was created in the first place. And it's really the only thing that's in that chapter, or that article of that chapter. And so we want to just simply move it into the Auar. It makes more sense to have it all in that area. So we're essentially proposing to delete this article from Chapter 15, and we're incorporating the pertinent stuff that we still use into Chapter 21. And as you know, we are in the process of slowly but surely updating our zoning code and migrating things from Chapter 19 to Chapter 21. However, we still have all the definitions that we use housed in Chapter 19. So we're taking the definitions that are related to all this environmental review, and we're adding those to our definition section. And then Chapter 21, there's a couple different areas of this chapter that are being modified. First of all, well, this is showing you all the different areas that are being modified. All the modifications are happening to what's called Article 5 Administration Nonconformity. I'll go through them individually. So in Division A, which is about approvals and permits, the current text kind of walks through the various types of approvals and permit processes that we have, planned developments, CUPs, et cetera. And so each one of those has to be minor, has a minor amendment to reference the mandatory environmental review in the language. Division B, application process and fees. So we have a table in the code that has the, lays out the application fees for all these various types of reviews that we do. And so currently, there is one for EAW or environmental review, and we are proposing to increase that to better reflect the actual cost of the staff time to review one of these kinds of reviews. We are also adding a reference to the Auar payment requirements. That's not there at this point in time. We are also including, there's a, there's a subclause in this division that speaks to what's called special studies. Those are some of those traffic studies you've probably seen in conjunction with some of the bigger projects, especially in South Loop. And we pay for those through an escrow. And it makes sense to do the same kind of a process with other project-specific EAWs or EISs. So we're adding that language in there. Division F is basically where we're putting all the new language related to the environmental review. Well, right now, it is occupied by another section of the code called general provision. So we're moving that to Division AH, I'm sorry, to vacate that and make space for the environmental review language. So this is really the bulk of what we're doing here. So, and it's, so the new Division F is really the section of the code that will compile all of the requirements related to environmental review. So just a couple of the highlights, because there's a, you know, a lot of this is really just kind of summarizing what's in state statutes. There's nothing here that's really up for debate. We don't have the authority to change the statutory requirement. So we're just trying to codify it and put it into our code. But I just wanted to point out a couple things, just to help you understand more about how this works. So the documents, environmental, required environmental documents would be prepared under the city's discretion. However, the city may hire the consultant to prepare. Oftentimes, what happens is the project proposer hires the consultant and prepares the EAW, and they submit it, and then that's why we charge the fee. So our staff time to review what they've submitted is covered. But there are times maybe when the city would be the one to actually hire the consultant or maybe even do the documentation itself. For instance, we, staff generally takes the lead on preparing the South Loop Auar, but some of the technical studies that go into that are hired out to consultants like traffic consultants or utility consultants. The city council has to formally accept a mandatory, if a project triggers a mandatory EAW or EIS, the environmental review has to be formally accepted by the city council before they can entitle or approve a project or any permits related to that. However, public review can be happening concurrent. So the Planning Commission could hold a public hearing on a project. The city council simply could not approve it or act to approve it until the environmental review was deemed complete and acceptable. And as I mentioned to you before, the Auar's are subject to a update every five years in order to remain valid, or if, earlier, if something comes up that was not anticipated in the approved Auar. For instance, a development comes in that's a lot bigger than what was studied, because you want to make sure that the, the whole key to this is, is having a mitigation plan that provides some means to mitigate whatever the impacts might be. So you want to make sure that you've studied the right things. The new section also walks or describes the payment procedures. And as I mentioned before, for the project-specific kinds of environmental reviews, EAW or an EIS, we're proposing an escrow approach, very, pretty much the same as we do for special studies. And for the Auar, we're essentially saying we want to keep the same process that we've had, we've been using since 1982. And that involves a permit fee that gets applied to larger developments that are in the area covered by the Auar. Those get deposited into a special account. It is then drawn upon to pay for the technical studies. And that's what we've been doing for 20 years now. So that's kind of a high-level overview of what this ordinance includes. And so this is our standard summary of our public notification. And with that, I've put together a motion, should you choose to use it, and otherwise, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Farnham, and I appreciate the good work. Sometimes cleaning up code is not flashy work, but it's important, one, to make sure that we're current, but also to make it usable. And so thank you to you and your colleagues for that. Questions for staff? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Ms. Farnham, I have a question about the use of Auar. And I know you mentioned it was in the South Loop primarily, but looking at other development areas here in Bloomington, looking at the Lindell Avenue or the Portland and American, would we utilize those types of tools for the environmental impact, or is it just parcel by parcel in those types of planned, long-term developments?
Sure, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Goldsman. You could, you really could define any area that you wanted. The reason why the South Loop is because the projected development there, it's likely that there's going to be bigger developments, and the type of development that would trigger an EAW. On Lindell, there might be a project or two through there that might trigger that, because as you saw, the, for instance, the residential would be 375 units. So that's a pretty big project. So it might be, but it's kind of, in the South Loop, we know that there's a lot of development that could trigger that. In some of the other areas, maybe not so much. I could imagine, you know, at some point, when Normandale Lakes was first starting to develop, that would probably have been a good area for an Auar. I think at the time that we, Auar's came to, became an alternative means of doing EAWs, I don't know exactly the date, but it was probably about the same time that they did the South Loop, because they hadn't previously been doing that, but that was something for areas that were campus-like and whatnot. So that's why I think in Normandale, the development was probably far enough gone that didn't really make sense to start one again. But, but to your question, could the city establish an Auar or create an Auar for a different area? Certainly, they could, but it would only make sense if we anticipated the development would include a significant amount of development that would trigger individual EAWs.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that one? Other questions for staff? Seeing as the city is the applicant, we will open the public hearing. We don't have anyone in the chamber. Mr. Mark Agard, do we have anyone online?
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I am checking our online presence, and they are all staff members, so we have nobody here for public on.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Discussion. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll echo what Chair Roman mentioned before, thanks to staff. I know this is pretty straightforward, so I'm in support, but I'm sure it was a lot of work on the backend, cleaning everything up and making things more efficient for both applicants for projects and for the city to go through the review process. So thank you, and I'm in support.
Any other discussion, or anyone inclined to make a motion? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case PL 2021-148, I move to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance amending standards related to environmental review procedures and fees, thereby amending Chapters 15, 19, 21, and 22 of the city code.
Second.
A motion and a second to recommend adoption of code amendments related to environmental reviews and fees. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This will move on to the August 30th city council meeting as a public hearing. For the purposes of those who are watching, that concludes our business of regular, regular nature. The remaining items on our agenda are study items. Study items are a time for staff to get input and feedback from the commission. They do not have a public hearing or feedback component. Item number two is a discussion on the notification distance requirements for land use applications. And I believe Mr. James has the staff report for us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Let me pull up the slides here in a minute. Give me one minute here. Okay, sorry for the delay. So this is a study item on public hearing notifications and the existing practices. A few months ago, council requested that staff review our current practices and explore options, that there might be options to change those or revise. So the objective of notification for these public hearings is to maximize awareness, especially of those nearby or more impacted properties. Ideally, with notification, it would result in increased participation. And then, of course, to improve transparency in government practices and in public decision-making. Now, that all said, we still want to do so in a cost-effective manner. And also that, you know, when choosing who gets noticed and how that it's done in a fair, consistent manner from one application to the next. So how do we work towards our objective? First, the statute does require a few items. One, the statute requires that a notice be mailed to nearby properties. And statute also requires that there be publication in the local newspaper about an upcoming public hearing and the meeting information. So we do each of those. In addition, we also send email updates regularly, usually sent maybe about a week in advance before the meeting to those that subscribe for the Planning Commission updates. And then we also post information on our websites in a few different locations. So one, there's a meetings webpage that's posted here. So this Planning Commission, as well as other commission council meeting information. And at that website, the agendas and packet information is posted about a week in advance. We also have a development map. So that's more intended, it's an interactive tool. It's intended to let people know about maybe a little bit more significant development projects, usually involves, you know, some sort of built structures at various areas. It'll let people know about, you know, what's upcoming, what's been approved, and what's under construction. And then kind of the catch-all, then, we have an application portal. And so there, anyone can go and look and see any type of application, any type of land use proposal that's been submitted to the city. So that would include even items that don't require a public hearing. In addition, for those projects that involve a more significant exterior changes, we require, yeah, we require that onsite signage be posted, so that's pictured here. And then for projects that might be a little bit more controversial, we strongly recommend that the applicant or developer conduct a neighborhood meeting with those nearby property owners. So I want to focus a little bit more on especially the mailing notice requirements, since this topic comes up periodically when neighbors feel that they don't, feel like they have not received proper notice. And sometimes it's with regards to mailing, so let's, let's talk more on that. So I mentioned that the mailing is a state statute requirement. And the distances are noted here. So for conditional use permits, interim use permits, and rezonings, mailing is required from 350 feet away from a subject property. However, there isn't a mailing necessarily required of site plan approval or comp plan map amendment, or variances even. However, a lot of cities, and Bloomington included, simply send a mailing for almost every type of public hearing. You can see our neighbors here, a lot of them simply follow that state statute of 350 feet away. And then they do that for many of their other land use applications besides just those required by statute. And a similar practice is done for variances too. So it's not required by statute, but almost every city requires that notification be sent to those surrounding properties. So larger cities tend to notice a little bit lower distance, since they tend to be more dense. That means, you know, just more letters being mailed, so they're trying to be cost-effective. I did reach out to many of these cities, and there are alternative approaches that some follow as well. A handful of them send out postcards instead of letters. You know, Minneapolis and St. Paul make an effort to notify their neighborhood organizations that they've recognized. And then St. Lawrence Park conducts neighborhood meetings for many And then St. Louis Park conducts neighborhood meetings for many of their development applications. So kind of different from Bloomington, St. Louis Park is more involved with development app, with those neighborhood meetings. So I wanted to touch on a few aspects of what this kind of distance requirement means for those mailed notifications. So that distance, it's based on property line, so I took just an example site here. There's no proposed development, it's at that Indian Mounds Elementary. But if you were to measure five hundred feet away from that property, it would encompass those properties that fall within that red circle. So any project here, the highlighted properties would receive mailed notification. And this is similar to many of our notifications. What happens is some properties just miss that cutoff. They might just be a few feet away and not, not receive a mailing because the cutoff is strictly five hundred feet in Bloomington. So, you know, there's some downsides to that. It seems unfair that property, properties would just miss that when their neighbors do receive a letter. I chose this site as an example because you'll notice the building is only on that north end of the lot, but the property boundaries actually stretch a ways to the south. However, when we send out the notice, it's measured from property boundaries and not just where the project or change might be occurring. So there's obviously challenges with identifying, you know, what's the most effective distance? How is it fair and applied the same throughout the city? You know, in this area of the city, maybe slightly larger lots, or smaller lots. In other areas, there might be larger lots. So it's difficult to have, you know, one standard and have it be fair, consistent throughout. So some considerations that have been brought up in the past. One was that we could increase that notification radius, you know, something beyond five hundred feet. And another is that, you know, maybe there's a way we could more logically pick which neighborhoods or groups of properties receive that notice. So let's look a little bit more at those now. Now, increasing that notification distance, it would definitely align with our intent to maximize awareness, more letters would be sent out. But it would also increase costs. And then the question, of course, is, you know, with those extra costs, is that the city that's paying for those or the applicant? Currently, what the practice is, is any application fee covers one hundred mailings, but any mailing that goes beyond a hundred, there's a dollar fifty charge per letter that's applied to the applicant. And so the other consideration too is, you know, if we did want to increase the distance, to what extent would we increase it? How would we pick a distance in a fair manner? And I'll touch on in a minute, that we still kind of deal with that issue of properties just missing the cutoff. So this is looking at the example of the Penn Lake Town Homes project here. On the left is the existing five hundred foot notifications. Those properties are mailed a letter. That was fifty-one properties. If the distance requirement was a thousand feet, we would notice a hundred forty-four properties. So that doubling of distance doesn't mean that there's a doubling of notices. In fact, it usually means that there's, you know, tripling or quadrupling the number of notices. So in this case too, you know, that's over the hundred notifications that is covered in that application fee. So there would have been an additional cost to the applicant if that, if there was that But again, with this, you know, in either case, with that exact cutoff, there are properties that, you know, it, it seems like they should get a notice, but they just miss. You know, all their neighbors on the block get a notice, but not the one. And so that happens with the five hundred foot, as well as a thousand-foot distance. And there here is the other one down here. So just some quick pros and cons. I mentioned, you know, increased distance means more letters that are mailed out, but again, a greater cost right to the city or the applicant. It might result in improved notification of those higher-profile projects, but then some of those other projects that might just result in over-notification. We've received complaints from people too that have received too much mail. And then last, you know, there's potential for increased awareness. People don't always, we can't guarantee that they'll read the letter, but the idea is that, you know, the more we send, the more likely people will know about something. However, I've mentioned this, no matter what distance we increase the mailing to, there will always be those properties that just get cut off. So then the other option consideration was that notification by neighborhood. And again, that intent that it aligns with is, you know, to maximize awareness, especially of those nearby. And here, we're really attempting to address that cutoff issue. But the issue is, can it be done fairly? So look at an example here. This is just a few sites off of Normandale Boulevard. Again, no project here, this is just an example I picked out. So with the neighborhood approach, one issue is that Bloomington doesn't have delineated or designated neighborhoods like Minneapolis or St. Paul. So this approach by neighborhood would need to be done a little bit differently. And in the past, it's been suggested to notify by a block or maybe areas that are defined by streets. And again, trying to capture those properties that just miss or don't hit that cutoff. So in this example, it'd be probably easy to imagine, you know, those properties in green here, that, you know, they just missed the cutoff, but they're included on a block with neighbors that received the notice. It'd be easy to imagine them getting a letter, be a fairly easy code amendment to write, as well as, you know, these other green properties, you know, they're defined by the roads and the other properties that receive a notice, so it's, it's pretty well delineated. But the trickier issue is some of these other properties, you know, there's not a clear block, the streets don't come to an end. Even if we were to say, you know, notify properties along a street, some of these roads are really curvy, and it's tough to know where the street face would end and where the next, next line of properties begins. And so, you know, if we were to go by block, in this case, you know, maybe the whole orange area would get notified, but then how would you notify some of these others that are seemingly closer? It's a little bit more difficult, and once we start introducing this sort of concept, it's almost more of a pick-and-choose approach, which gets difficult for staff and much more Now, again, if we looked at the northeast end here, much of this is just city-owned property, it's wetland area. But then there's properties over here that might be notified. You know, if they're getting the notification, why not those across the street that, you know, there's no, other than wetland, there's no property in between. So the straight-line approach that's required by statute, it's not perfect, but it's at least subjective, whereas this neighborhood approach is, is much more subjective. And also keep in mind, you know, mailing is just one of several approaches to notify about public hearings. So there's other options for, for people to find out. And so instead of mailing, sending mailings to more properties, there's also ways that we can make our existing mailings more effective. So one would be to notify occupants, you know, especially those renters, and not only property owners. In order to, you know, send, especially notify those more impacted, this would definitely help to address racial equity concerns, since a disproportionate amount of the city's renters are BIPOC populations. However, it's a little bit easier said than done to notify occupants. Occupants are coming and going, and the city doesn't always have that up-to-date list of the subunit addresses in order to send each unit a direct letter. Our data is a little bit better for residential than for commercial, but it, it's still, there's some data that's missing here and there. It would be difficult to put something into code. There are private mailing services that might have a little bit more up-to-date addresses. However, they, they're careful not to share that exact address, and so you'd have to use their mailing service. So that's an increased cost per mailing, you know, maybe a few hundred dollars extra per mailing. But I've also heard mixed reviews of those, you know, sometimes with those bulk mailings at apartments, there might be just a stack of letters more generically addressed that are left in a common area and don't actually get into individual boxes. So another option is to provide some sort of option in, that's in non-English. Now, you can imagine on this example mailed letter here, maybe there's a blurb about, you know, "Go here, go to this website" to see this in a different language. So that could be an option. However, there might still be issues with translation. I imagine even for English speakers, some of this language might be difficult to interpret. And, you know, things like conditional use permit probably don't translate very well, but at the very least, there might be ways to, to make it more understandable in other languages. Postcards I mentioned is an approach other cities use. The intent is that it's a little bit more user-friendly, you know, you can, you don't have to open it, you can quickly interpret a postcard. And then some online tools. So we have a few websites already, but we continue to evaluate those tools. We have that new Let's Talk site for engagement. Of course, there's social media is always an option. However, it would require a significant amount of staff time to set up those pages, to monitor social media. So it may not make sense for every type of application. But, so staff here recommends to maintain our current mailing distance standards and to continue to evaluate some of these other methods, especially notifying occupants and looking at those online tools. So as this is a study item, we invite further discussion. I am seeking some sort of recommendation or discussion around that mailing distance requirement, but also welcome input on these other notification strategies. This item is tentatively scheduled then to go before council as a study item, August thirtieth. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. James. Appreciate your work on this study item, so we're in an open discussion. Anyone who would like to? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if we're doing rotters, but, Mr. James, I, if you had to guess, what percentage of projects do you hear from neighbors saying, "I either didn't get a notification, or I did, I had no idea, I got a, I technically got a mailing, but I never saw it"?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. That's a good question. It varies. It's tough to pin it down to a number. I did want to mention, we use the property owner information through the county, so it's whoever's paying taxes on the property. That doesn't always mean that's the person that's living there. We do have our code requirement that the owner notify the occupant, but, you know, that doesn't always happen. So it's not uncommon that we, you know, receive that complaint that they did not receive a mailing. You know, when we do go back and check our records, we can, we can see that it was sent. But, you know, for some reason or another, they, they don't receive it, or maybe don't recall it. Mr. Markergard, are you able to answer more thoroughly if there's a percentage or number of times in a year that we hear this?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Albrecht, I would say the majority of cases, we just don't hear anything from anybody. But of the cases where we do hear from people, I would say maybe twenty-five percent of the time, somebody will say, "Well, you know, I didn't receive the notice, and I think I should have." And in some cases, they should have, but for whatever reason, whether it's failure in mail delivery, or it was misplaced, or the name is wrong in the records, for example, yeah, that can happen.
Commissioner Abdi.
Thank you, Chair, and Mr. James for your presentation. I'm very passionate about, I mean, I'm a planner professionally, and I really value the importance of the notifications to the neighborhoods, because projects, developers come and go, but the projects they develop stay in the community, and the people surrounding that community are therefore good, and they've invested all of their, you know, energy and passion in staying in that community. So, one, I did not know that there were neighborhoods in Minneapolis. I work in Minneapolis, excuse me, neighborhoods in Bloomington. So in Minneapolis, you know, we, part of the application process is that you are required as an applicant to notify the neighborhood and attend their meetings and kind of explain your project, whether the neighborhood hates it or not. And in this case, I, it's recommended, and I wasn't sure if there is not an established neighborhood, then what do you recommend to, how do you, how would an applicant then move forward in that, since it's a recommendation, then I can ignore it, since it's not a requirement? If there were established neighborhoods in Bloomington, I highly value it being a mandatory, so that folks, when they come to meetings or public hearings, that they have at least engaged to the property owner. As a community neighborhood, they have talked about the project collectively, so that obviously each person, each person's dislike or like for a project would be unique to their individual person. But for the benefits or the, the harm that project will bring collectively, a neighborhood certainly can talk about that, and I think their voices coming together is much stronger, so I value that. And I don't know how you create neighborhoods, because neighborhoods are essentially formed by the community's interest, so you can't force it upon them. So maybe I'm just, I don't know if that's a comment, or a question, or whatever, but I do question the recommendation of the neighborhood engagement, but I do see the importance of it. And I, if, if something did exist, I think it would be better to, it to be mandatory. Another side comment or question maybe can be, do condos get notifications? I know we talked about renters, but condos are individual unit owners?
Yeah, so Commissioner Abdi, I can answer both of those. I believe condos receive that notice. If it's, you know, if it's each owned separately, they should receive the notice. The other comment you had on the neighborhoods, I should clarify, so staff is not recommending that we notify by neighborhoods. You touched the point, you know, we don't have neighborhoods, so it'd be difficult to do so. You know, ideally, if we had neighborhoods, that would be an easier recommendation, but without those, yes, staff does not recommend notifying by neighborhoods.
If I could add, you know, for Commissioner Abdi is aware, and those of us who've lived in Minneapolis are aware, but for those maybe from Bloomington who aren't aware, there are specific neighborhood associations that are, have, in Minneapolis that have staff that are employees of the city. And so notifications to the neighborhood- And so notifications to the neighborhood associations who have regular public meetings is different than perhaps the concept of in Bloomington where when we talk about notifying a neighborhood, that people may assume that every individual in the neighborhood gets notified. So not saying, I don't have an opinion on that topic, but just realizing that some people may not have that context for what that means in Minneapolis.
Yes, thank you, Chair, for the clarification. Some of the, almost, I'm pretty sure that Minneapolis neighborhoods are actually funded through the NRP program or, so they are funded. And as you said, Chair, they are staffed, so they have regular meetings, regular agendas. They have committees, whether it's housing, economic development. So they're actually well-run entities to some extent, but they, they are well-known that they can actually communicate with their own boundary residents and inform them that there is a project coming to their site. And as a resident of that boundary neighborhood, I can attend that meeting that day and talk to the developer. But since we don't have that here, I'm like, it's a missed opportunity, but you can't force feed that to the community, so.
Commissioner Corman?
Thank you, Chair. So I was wondering if the city has any type of tool that allows you to measure community participation when you notify? Because it would be good to know in which areas of Bloomington, in any case, if you were gonna, if you were gonna maximize, I think is the word you used, to maximize notifications. If you were gonna do it considering the cost of it, if there's a specific areas in Bloomington that might be worth, you know, putting the extra money on that. So do additional notifications mean you will have more participation? Or would you end up spending this money and still get the same results? The other thing is, when it comes to the, the non-English options, I think that's a good point because obviously there's many people that will probably get those notifications and, you know, what does this exactly mean? And even have an idea what it might mean. And then on top of that, it's in a different language. So I understand also that doing the translation, especially considering that we might have several different languages, it's, it can be, it can be a little challenging. Like you said, you know, the accuracy of the language. For example, in the middle of that translation, a lot of things might get lost. Also, doesn't necessarily mean that people will open that piece of mail and would also read it and would also participate or of the, of the hearings. So there's not necessarily a guarantee. I know by experience that sometimes in community surveys, you might add the option of the other language, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it increased the participation either. So, but I was wondering if you could still, you know, in your notifications, even if they don't come in another language other than English, if there would be like some sort of like, in that other language, just a line, let's say a line in Spanish that says, if you need a further explanation of this or a translation in your language, in your desired language, please call this line. So having like language lines in different, so if you have staff in the city that can, you know, somebody, if I'm a resident and I really want to know what is happening and what's going on and I really need to translate and interpret, I can grab the phone and call and say, hey, I got this in my own language and, and then receive more, more help. So, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else with thoughts on this? I know, I guess I would say that for me, this feels like we've been spending, we spent a fair bit of time in this body, at least in my time here, what, the way I refer to it is kind of being the suburb of the 21st century and not the suburb of the 60s or 70s. It's, it's just the natural evolution of our city. And so there's a part of me that feels like I'm, I'm more inclined to be at the, the 350, what's required by the state. And, but then also perhaps, and to, you know, Mr. James, you hit on this. Whether it's 350, 500, 1,000, five miles, there will always be somebody across the street. There will always be somebody who was, who was left out. And so, you know, we just talked about in item one, you know, with our environmental impact things of that nature, that we, we adopt the code with the state standard. You know, we could have different standards for those things, but we have decided that the state standard is sufficient or that it would be overly onerous or burdensome on landowners or developers to go beyond that. And so my instinct is to be more, and looking at that chart of what our neighboring cities do, there's, you know, Edina has a big circle, but except for a couple of, on one side of the column or the other, most everyone else is, is doing the statute. You know, could we have a system in place eventually whereby when individual A comes to City Hall to sign up for water service, that we give them the opportunity to provide an email address? And then we have that on file and maybe 350 gets the legally required postcard or a letter. But we have a practice of up to 500 or 1,000 if you have an email address on file. And so again, I, I recognize that not everybody has that, but I also know that nowadays, most, most people, I mean, I have a 91-year-old grandma who is on email just as much as anybody I know. So, you know, maybe she's an outlier, but the point being that we're, we're reaching a point where that's an acceptable method of communication if we want to go beyond kind of the core. To the question about strategies, you know, I don't have a problem with going the postcard route as long as we're including the information that we're required to include by statute. I think the example, the, the letter, I think it's a, it's a wonderful letter. It includes a lot of good information as, as a resident. I would find that very helpful. If we're trying to, again, figure out where the balance of staff time burden, cost, what is the right information to the point of accessibility and other languages, you know, we, is, what is the right standard? You know, we, we produce eight and a half by 11 in one language and either have no reference to or a sentence as Commissioner Corman recommended for other options. And that's okay to do that, but again, if you have less information, that either takes you to a webpage or a phone number. So those are my thoughts on that. Commissioner Cookton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kind of just go down the list of some of the various things proposed here and just give my thoughts on them. We talked about the notification of the neighborhood. I agree that I think we should stick with a certain distance. I think it's the only way to keep it fair and we're going to get more complaints if we, if we do it any differently. And so I'm, I'm in favor of keeping it at a certain distance. I would be amenable to 350 feet. I could also stay at 500. I don't feel we need to enlarge it for what everyone has already said. There's always going to be somebody left out. Regarding notification of renters, I find that to be important and something I would be in favor of. I rented in the city for a long time and I'm quite sure I never saw one thing from the city. And I wish I had because I maybe would have joined this commission earlier, who knows? But I think getting people interested in the public process early as renters or, you know, if you're a renter, you might be new to Bloomington. And so it's good to get those folks engaged. And so I would like to see more consideration for including renters. In regards to language, I think a lot of people have brought up the difficulties in doing that. I would second those difficulties, but I do like Commissioner Corman's recommendation of if you would like a translation, please see, see this. I think that's a smart way to do it. Regarding postcards, I'm in favor of it. If it saves money and it's probably more attractive to look at, I can get behind the idea of postcards. And I think on that postcard, you could, if you want the full information that we're providing now, in my mind, that postcard would include a link that says for additional information, see, see the website. And so I think that accomplishes what we want to do. So I would be in favor of the postcards.
Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to echo or repeat everything that's been said, but two things that came to my mind is all of these mailings equals a lot of paper. And so I think about sustainability and do we really want to be cutting down trees where we don't need? So I agree with the smaller distance to the 350 or we can keep it to 500. But do we really need to do eight and a half by 11 with an envelope? I think postcards much more sustainable and it's more approachable as well. The other thing that I looked at too is, you know, how do we get around this, this circumference and people being left out? And I really look at, Mr. James, you had a picture of the sign that was on the corner of that new development. I think we should have signs on those properties on all of the corners so that the residents that are living, that own, that drive down the street, maybe go to the school. They don't live in the, in the proximity, but they're in the school next to it and they can see that and find out more information. I think that's the most equitable way for anyone that maybe lives, works, educates, walks down the street to get that information and know that there's something coming down. And I also see that as a sustainable approach because you can reuse that sign in the entire city of Bloomington. So those are my two pieces of, of information or feedback. And I like the signage and I like the postcards.
I would, ditto on the sign idea. I like that. Commissioner Corman, did you have something?
Thank you, Chair. And then just listening to your comments, Commissioner Goldsman, on paper. So for this requirement, does that requirement will eventually have an option of maybe opting up paper, you know? Not receiving paper? Can I just get an email? I guess it takes also a very responsible resident to be looking, you know, to be on top of those. There must be a reason why it's still paper, but I'm wondering, you know, is that something that maybe has been considered or is being considered for the future? And then the importance of this, this public process, you know, the awareness of the public process that you mentioned. Our schools, you know, once again, that connection that a city and school district has because I think it's also very important that we, we continue to work and with our public schools or all schools to, to help our students understand how this type of process works. So because someday, that's the kind of thing they need to know as homeowners or renters.
Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Corman, was, did I understand correctly, you're proposing like an opt-out clause? If you're a homeowner and don't want to get any more mailings, you could, I think that's a smart idea. I don't know if state statute would allow us to have an opt-out clause. I'm seeing a no, but maybe, maybe in a future world, we could, we could see something like that.
I love this idea. My only concern is that people move and then what happens then? And as someone who works for a trade organization and I understand how hard it is to keep emails up to date and having emails of the entire city sounds like an administrative nightmare to me. But I also think that the, the beauty of actually mailing a piece, and I agree, I think the postcard is the way to go, is that especially a postcard that you don't have to open, someone can look at. For example, like I get a piece of mail probably once a week from the people who lived in our house five years ago. And I don't open it because it's illegal. But, and so I throw it away. And, but if it was a postcard and it was addressed to someone else, I would still be able to see what the content was right in front of my face without ever actually opening the envelope, which is uncomfortable because it's not addressed to me. But if it was addressed to the old, the people who lived in that house, but now I live there, I'd still look at it because I'd be like, oh, this is interesting. This applies to me now I live here, which I think is a, is a benefit. And I think we could reach more people that way for sure.
Thank you, Chair. For a person who has actually sent out notices before for planning commission, I guess I'm wondering to staff, maybe some of you on the commission have not seen a notification letter before. How much detail does that include? Because in my case, it would be like if there is, is this a sample?
Yes.
Thank you. That's a lot of information. That's what I would expect, yes. I think all of these are great information that I feel like a postcard would not be feasible for. And I think us, the notifier being a government entity, I think there's a reason why we continue to be just outdated with how we communicate. So I think trying to be innovative in trying to communicate with residents through innovation, I think it's going to take some time and for us to immediately cut off this detailed information that I would care about as a resident, if I were to get that, if I get a postcard that says, there's a public hearing. And I'm like, well, what kind of public hearing? I don't care so much about a public hearing. But if it said, there is a five-story, you know, 10-story building being developed at this location, I'm like, well, this is going to be too crazy. I need to be aware of it. So I feel like a postcard would, while it sounds innovative, I think it's going to really eliminate the information necessary to communicate the purpose of the notice of a public hearing. And I don't know, in statute, is there a detailed requirement of what language needs to be included in statute other than mailing people within a certain distance? And I am in support of actually keeping the 500 because of the large lots in Bloomington. Minneapolis and St. Paul have significantly smaller lots, so 350 feet, you actually get a lot more properties than you would in Bloomington. So, yeah.
Mr. Markard, Mr. James, do you have any information on what's required to be in the, the notice?
Yeah, thank you, Chair and Commissioner Abdi. So I did check with our legal team and the direction was that some of this language is necessary, especially, you know, information about the meeting and how to attend it and what time and, and some of the language too about what's being proposed. However, the direction was that it could definitely be pared down significantly and some could be, you know, made available through, in more detail on a, on a website somewhere.
Because I would, my thought on that would be if, if, when you come back or based on what you hear from the council, if, when you come back, if, if the recommendation, when it's here for action, is a postcard, it would be helpful to have a sample of what that postcard would be. And then perhaps even when it comes back, this current one with, you know, highlighted areas that are still covered and areas that would be, or a resident would have to seek out, if that's the direction that your final recommendation goes.
Okay, thank you.
Perhaps a very small print is the right answer.
Send everyone in town a monocle.
I'm just going to say this rhetorically. I think the way I thought about this was that if you can pare it down, the people that want to know more information will go find it. The people that weren't, that didn't care anyway, aren't going to mind that that information was missing.
I would say the exact same thing. I think Commissioner Abdi, myself included, as, you know, I'm a master's in planning too. And I would look at this and be like, oh, interesting, I'll look into it, right? But I'm a total planning nerd and that makes a lot of sense. But, but for someone else, if you have that narrative and the narrative says, like Commissioner Abdi said, a 10-story building at this address, I'd be like, okay, right? And my husband probably would, who does not care at all, would be like, oh, Google, 10 stories, that seems tall. And Google it and see where it is and then reach for more information. I just think, you know, I think people don't read, number one. And people, what they do read is in Twitters, like Twitter length of information. And if we can provide, I'm not saying get rid of a lot of this, but at least provide enough information that the people who really want it can go find more. I think that's important.
Respectively, I feel like we're doing a lot of generalizations of what our communities would read or would not read. I feel like a lot of the communication that's coming from the planning commission or anything of the notices that are going to residents about development certainly will impact a property owner. So if the language were to say, there is a development that may impact your property, you know, and it's, that's just that one sentence and then this address, then it would pique my interest. Yes, as a planner, I have certainly, I read things differently and my interests are certainly different. But as a person, like the lady who's recently was coming here to talk about the impact it would have having that bowling the impact it would have having that bowling alley in that location, if she was not notified, I mean, she was right behind the property, but if she was not notified, then that certainly, everything she talked about was about the impact her property, her life, her living nest of that space. I don't think that was a good terminology. But I am for trimming down the language to one half a page or whatever, but a lot of the details are certainly things that are important to an individual to decide that this development may impact my property or my property, whatever the case may be. So, how do you clean that up? I think it would be for staff to play around with that. But I do find the interpretation that we don't read, but we do read things that are important to us and our property. So, maybe clarifying that I don't read magazines that are sent to me, but I'm sure if it was about gardening, or if it was things that said, this is going to impact their property, I would certainly pay attention.
Any other thoughts? Or Mr. James, are there other things you were looking for, feedback or guidance from us that we haven't covered?
This has been really helpful discussion. I can, so what I'm hearing is with, in terms of distance, to either maintain or maybe even lower that distance. And then, the neighborhood approach, we were against that. And then, all of these others, it sounded like general support for, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion about online presence yet, however, I know that we're doing some of that already. The examples I mentioned were the Let's Talk page. I did find Edina actively posts some of their new development projects and public hearings about those within the Let's Talk, Bloomington's online engagement webpage.
Good. Well, is that, I think that's enough on that one, and thank you for bringing this, and thanks to everyone for their ideas.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Item number three is our annual review of the Planning Commission Rules of Procedure. Is that Mr. Markergard on that one?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, let me share a document here quickly. So, one of the things your rules of procedure include is a required review of the rules of procedure once per year at your first August meeting, so we're here. And staff has two proposed changes, and you may have many others, and this is an opportunity to talk about it tonight, but in terms of the two staff proposed changes, they're both cleanup items. Earlier this year, you decided to change, get rid of study meetings and do study items like we had tonight at your regular meetings, so that they're televised and more transparent. So, both of these are cleanup items that relate to study items. Basically, just a study item shall be considered at regular meetings or special meetings. Special meetings have been very rare for the Planning Commission. And then, in change 1.4, just getting rid of study meetings and referencing special meetings in terms of where they're held. So, two cleanup recommendations, and then these, these other changes that showed up in your packet, those were made either in 2019 or 2020. We included that just for your ease of reference. But I should note that the rules also say, and where is this? Someplace in there, it says that you should have the chance to talk about ex parte contacts and conflicts of interest, if you want to have any discussion on that. So, just want to flag that as well. So, that's all I have by way of presentation, and just, this item is basically a chance for, for your discussion and further recommended changes.
I think a copy of this was included in the docket. Does anyone have any items that they would like to raise for consideration for revision? Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. While we were all doing these meetings at home, we started doing our votes by roll call. And here, when we're in the chambers, we do not do votes by roll call. Mr. Markergard, do you have any background on why we didn't do them by roll call previously? And I'd like to have a conversation about possibly moving in that direction.
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton, the roll call requirement stems from a statutory provision on remote meetings. So, if even one of you is remote, let's say we have six here and one remote, then the statute says everything has to be by roll call, and I believe that's just to eliminate confusion. The statutes do not require roll call in person. There's nothing to stop you from doing that. It's more just, I think, a time issue of, do you want to invest the time in the roll call votes? Historically, if there's been any doubt on who's voting which way, you know, the chair typically asks for a show of hands, you know, just to ascertain for the minutes. Let's say that's four, three vote, and it's not apparent who voted which way. Often, the chair will say, okay, could, just for clarification, who voted, you know, against or something like that.
And I, if I can add that too, I believe Robert's Rules of Order also provides for, although we may typically take voice votes, any commissioner can request a roll call vote on any item. So, if, we could go any direction, but if we, if the general direction was we would continue to do voice votes, but maybe, you know, just being aware that any commissioner on any one item can say, you know, when we say, you know, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion, a commissioner could say, I would like to request a roll call vote, and that doesn't require any second or any further request, it just is. That's one of the prerogatives of the commissioner. So, I don't, I'm not prejudging one way or the other, I'm just letting you know there is another option too.
Yeah, thanks for that background information. Certainly recognize the interest of time with doing voice votes, and certainly for something like closing a public hearing, that generally seems to be the way to go. I wouldn't be against having a roll call vote for our final action on an item, so I'll leave that to others if they'd like to discuss.
Commissioner Corman, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, because you brought up Robert Rules of Order. Oh, sorry. You brought up the Robert Rules of Order, and I know that there, there's, like you said, there's no requirement to do the roll call, what we are all in-personed. I think that there are some exceptions, so it would just be to the commission and to the city to determine, or the statute, maybe, what are those exceptions? I know, like, for things that are specific, like in other organizations, it also depends of things that are related to employees, for example, or contracts, things that are very specific, but obviously, we do not do that in here, so, otherwise, there is no need. But for the televised, televised sessions or meetings, it was a requirement, because it was not for sure, you know, when you, when you all go, I, it was not specific on the screen, who did say the I. It's a lot, you know, it's different, and so that why the requirement of, you know, you have to specify what your name is.
Others have thoughts on that topic? In favor, opposed, or indifferent?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I guess for being sensitive to time, I appreciate us now just being able to do I together, N together, but obviously, when someone's remote, it makes sense to do it by roll. I also like the idea of, if we do want to do it by roll call, we have that option on the fly. So, I'm just in favor of having that option be known and then keep it the way it is today.
Any other items of interest or discussion on this? I guess we didn't really resolve the question, Commissioner Cookton, but...
There's no need to resolve it. It's just a...
Yeah.
A proposal for increased transparency, but...
Sure.
I'm in favor of it either way.
Okay. Any other items on the rules of procedure for consideration? Guess we would consider those reviewed.
All right. And, oh. Mr. Chair, we would request a motion, if you'd like to make these two changes to sections 1.2 and 1.4.
Did I obtain that? I don't think as a chair I can make the motion.
Thanks. I move to approve the Planning Commission Rules of Procedure with the changes to sections 1.2 and 1.4.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Item four is also a study item on election of Planning Commissioner Officers. I will note that Commissioner Solberg is not with us tonight, so I would recommend that we continue this item until such a time as all seven of us can be here. I think some votes on things of leadership is probably better for all of us to have all of us here. And so, if someone, any discussion on that?
Does that need to be continued to a date certain?
The advice I received from staff is, since it's a study item and it's not a public hearing, it does not have to be date certain. We could continue it indefinitely.
I move to continue this item to a future Planning Commission meeting.
Second?
Motion and a second to continue the election of Planning Commission Officers to a date future, here, indefinitely. Any further discussion or anything that you need, Mr. Markergard, on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item is continued. The last item on our agenda is a consider approval of some of our meeting notes. The first meeting is June 17th, and all commissioners were present with the exception of Commissioner Abdi. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the draft Planning Commission meeting synopsis of June 17th, 2021, as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or edits? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
That motion passes. The next item is, for consideration is the July 1st meeting notes, and for that meeting, Commissioners Albrecht and Abdi were absent. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the meeting notes from July 1st, as presented in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the July 1st Planning Commission notes. Is there any discussion or edits? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
That motion passes. That completes the agenda for tonight's meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. Our next meeting is September 16th.